I'm going to call this meeting, the Monroe County Council, to order for the date of Tuesday, September 10th at 5:00 PM here in the Nat U Hill Meeting Room. And of course, we are on, as well on Teams. I want to welcome everyone to our meeting. I want to note for the record, we've got Counselor Hawke, Counselor Munson, Counselor McKim over here, we've got Counselor Wiltz, and Counselor Crossley, and I'm Trent Decker. And Counselor Iverson is either online or will be joining us online, so let's keep an eye out for him, okay? And with that, I will ask you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this will take us to Item 3, and I've heard a little bit from councilors already on potential changes to the agenda, so I'll just open that up and we'll figure it out. So, councilors, Counselor McKim.
Yes, I would like to move, move to move Item 12, Highway Department, to, I guess, I'd call it 8A, so after the consent agenda, because it's a very short, kind of mechanical procedure.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion for that, do I have a second?
Oh, second, thank you.
Counselor Hawke with the second. Any further discussion? All right, let's do this by voice vote, because I don't think he's here yet. All those in favor signify, but he is here.
He's here.
All right, sorry about that. Counselor Iverson is here remotely, welcome Counselor. We're going to do a roll call on this amendment to change the agenda, and I'll turn it over to Counselor, or to Kim Shell.
Okay, so, I was looking for something in my voting boxes. So, we are moving Item 12, 12 to 8A, is that what was said?
Yeah, basically, highway after the consent agenda.
Thank you. Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson? Counselor Iverson, we can't hear you.
Let's give him a second.
I'll move on to Counselor Wiltz. Did I call, I think, did I call Crossley?
Let's try Counselor Iverson one more time.
He is no longer on the screen. Hey, is Counselor Iverson?
See that his box is lit up on Teams? I'm not hearing him.
He's also talking, and it's being transcribed, so it's good on his end.
Oh, yeah.
It's ours.
But it's on our end, and we have to hear it, so.
All right. Given the nature of the motion, we're going to move on, but T S D, if you can help us figure out how we can get our Counselor in full participation, that'll be a big deal. Okay.
Okay, so then I'm going to say motion passed unanimous with the six votes.
All right, so the agenda is amended. Do we have any other motions to amend? We needed to add an item, is that correct?
Right.
Councilors, if there's no objection, I will add, we can add Item 8A1, Health Department Salary Ordinance Amendment, requesting to increase hours from 35 to 40 for the Senior Health Environmental Health Specialist General. Do I have a, any objection to that?
No. That will come right after the highway.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, 8A1, and this would be 8A1.
Yeah, yeah. Any, any objection to that? Hearing no objections, so ordered. So, any other changes to the agenda? We good? Awesome. Let's move on to public comment. And so next on the agenda, we have public comment, and this is for items that are not on the agenda, and there will be a time limit this evening of three minutes per speaker. If you have a comment you wish to make on an item not on our agenda, you can certainly come here to the podium and offer that here in the Nat U Hill Room, or raise your hand on Teams, and we will recognize you. All right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome. State your name if you-
Thank you, my name is Alan Blankstein. I've come to share some positive uplifting news for the Council and for Bloomington, having to do with the mill. Together with the mill, I've been involved with an endeavor that will launch tomorrow, September 11th at 11 o'clock, should you decide you are interested in partaking in it. Andy Lehman would be the contact person there. I'm going to tell you about that in just a second, but first, share that I was an MBA student here a long time ago, and after which I started Solution Tree, and I ran it for a dozen years, and I also started the Hope Foundation, whose honorary chairs were Archbishop Desmond Tutu and Renee Fleming, after which I went to DC, and then New York, and 15 years later, I'm back with my family. So, I'm very happy to be back, I'm happy to share that I'm still looking for ways to make wonderful things happen, and this is the latest in the queue. I had gone to school in 86 with another person that I met shortly after Siddiqui Traori, who became a friend of mine since then, and he started a, what we call D-Africa, Distance Education Africa. He serves all of the countries in the continent, has 60,000 students, and I said to Siddiqui, it would be great if we added to your repertoire, your students are learning how to start, how to do better in the businesses that they're in through the Darden School of Business Curriculum. However, how about if Africans learn how to own Africa even more than they're already doing? I would rather see them own Africa than to lose Africa, or to have China own Africa, or to have Exxon own Africa, how about if Africans own Africa? He loved the idea, and so I brought the mill in, and now, tomorrow, we'll be relaunching the beginning of this course, and it is for entrepreneurship in Africa, it will be serving 26 different countries, over 250 students. As I said, you could join tomorrow via Zoom, and also, I'll give you my email, should you want to be in touch about this, or any of the other things I'm trying to do to help our community and other communities. That's it in a nutshell. My email is alan, A-L-A-N, at hopefoundation, which was the name of the organization I had with Archbishop Tutu dot O R G, hopefoundation dot O R G. I really appreciate being back in Bloomington, it's great to see you all, hope to see you again.
Well, welcome home.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others that wish to make public comment for items not on the agenda, come forward to the Nat U Hill, or raise your hand on Teams. Come on forward.
Hi.
Pull up my statement. I'm Molly Otto.
Can you pull the mic down and speak closer to it, please?
Yes, is this much better?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel, my name is Molly Otto, I've been a resident of Monroe County for eight years, and a member of the Monroe County Women's Commission for three years. We want to give an update on what we've been working on, future projects we are envisioning, and reintroduce ourselves to the Council, Commissioners, and the public. Our meetings are the third Thursday of every month at 5:30 in the Nat Hill Room, also available to watch on CATS and via Teams online. We begin each meeting with our purpose and mission statement. This commission shall serve in an advisory role to assist residents, businesses, and the government of Monroe County in addressing issues of gender equity in all aspects of society. The mission is to advance the status of women and marginalized genders in all areas of county life. This year, we organized creating four subcommittees, Profile, Policy, Outreach, and Data. Each subcommittee applies the gender equity lens to current issues in the county. Profile's subcommittee purpose is to elevate the profile of the Monroe County Women's Commission, who we are and what we support. This means making public comment at county council and Commissioner meetings to give update on efforts, and attending events and meetings of community organizations, such as Heading Home of Southern Indiana, Monroe County Domestic Violence Coalition, and others. Outreach's subcommittee's purpose is to create and maintain programs that support our mission. Current focus is the Web Design Camp and Community Health Fair. Most recent efforts have included collaborations on the women's market on July 28th, encouraging attendees to register to vote. And we are currently planning for the upcoming health fair, September 28th, at Banneker Center, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The health fair will offer free health screenings, including blood pressure, A1C levels, and lipids. The fair is open to the public, and everyone is welcome. It will be the first of future annual events hosted in collaboration with IU Health. Policy's subcommittee's purpose is to evaluate county policy using gender equity lens. Current focus is the jail, creating a gender equity rubric for county codes and decision-making, and nonpartisan get-out-the-vote efforts in partnership with local organizations. Data's subcommittee's purpose is to become more grounded in who we serve through data, and the current focus is creating a survey. Thank you all for your time. Again, we meet the third Thursday at 5:30 in the Nat Hill Room, and all are welcome.
Thank you very much. Always good to hear from the Women's Commission.
President.
Yes.
I believe the next meeting of the Women's Commission has been moved because of our budget, so.
Counsel.
Okay, well, I just figured it was appropriate to let them know, but I don't know where it was, so if you know. It's not going to be here, it's somewhere, where is it, do you know?
Showers.
It's going to be in the showers building. All right, sorry.
There's a change there.
Just trying to help.
All right, thank you very much. Other comments from the public, if you have them, come forward in the Nat U Hill, or raise your hand on Teams. Just a reminder, all are welcome for public comment. All right, going once, twice, we'll move on then, thank you very much. We'll move on to department updates, and there will be a time limit of 10 minutes per department, and I know we've got one that had asked to give an update, Chris Hardisty, Senior Vice President of Developmental Services, you want to come on forward? You're welcome, other departments, be ready after that. You're welcome to either go here or there, whatever's most comfortable for you.
Can I present you guys?
Yeah, absolutely.
Information. Someone's saying something. There's general information about DSI across the state as well, and then the specific information about what we're doing here.
Hi. Could I have one of those, please, for the record?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to leave one, he'll get it. Thank you. All right, well, welcome.
So, as you said, I am with DSI, we are what was now Life, or what was formerly Life Designs here in town, and you guys have supported Life Designs for many, many years. I have Eddie Barretta here with me as well, he is the Senior Director of my programs here in Bloomington, and we're just here to say thank you. We appreciate the many years of support that you guys have given to Life Designs, that you guys have allowed us to continue to serve the folks here in Monroe County, and just to ensure you that even though we're now DSI, the funds that you are giving are staying right here with your folks in this community, and will be used to support those folks in this community. We are doing all kinds of fun things. Our folks are living in their own homes, we are helping them be as independent as they possibly can. The money that you guys have given have allowed us to, in the last year, take a space that was being used as storage, and completely gut that, clear it out, and turn it into a recreation space for our clients, where they're now able to use that space and enjoy that space. We have been able to redo some outdoor spaces that had been kind of dilapidated, and now could be used by those folks, and to access the outdoors and access their communities. And just a couple examples of what we've been doing with the funds that we've been receiving, and we just wanted to kind of reintroduce ourselves, as we do have a different name, but it's the same mission, same folks, we still maintain a local board with local individuals, we still have a focus right here in Monroe County, and just answer any questions you guys might have, and just introduce ourselves, and more than anything, just say thank you for the years of support, and just reopen this line of communication that, from what I understand, maybe had been a little broken the last few years, so we wanted to fix that and get that corrected.
Well, thank you so much, we'll see if councilors have any questions or comments. We appreciate you being here. Yeah, Counselor Wiltz?
I'd just like to say thank you for coming, appreciate it, and I believe you're planning or have visited the Commissioners as well, is that?
Yes, I have requested to be added to that agenda as well.
Great.
So, hopefully that'll happen within, at the end of the month when they have their meeting, so we're waiting to do that.
Okay, yeah. Well, thanks so much for bringing this, it's, it's good to kind of get an update from the company and understanding, you know, that you're still, you're still in operation, even under a different name.
Different name, but still the same mission that Suzie and everybody had for many, many years, still serving most of the same clients, and many new ones along the way, still growing. We've relaunched some community programs and doing things in the community, and hope to be a bigger presence here in town again than, like they were in the past, so excited about that. The caller advertisement there is about DSI as an agency all across the state, the single sheet that's on the right side of that has information specifically about what we're doing right here in Bloomington, just to give you some, and you also received that, I think, via an email, so. Thank you guys very much, we appreciate your time.
Oh, I do have a question. So, do you still have any kind of relationship with Crawford Homes?
With Crawford Apartments, sorry. We do not, no.
Okay.
No, we did have at the founding, whenever DSI merged with them, they were already in the process of separating that, and that has separated. We do still have a connection with the other housing project there in town up on Covey Lane, what is that called, Eddie? Yeah, Covey Lane Apartments, or the Housing Options, that's what it's called, Housing Options 1 and 2, sorry, it took me a second. We still are affiliated with that, but no, the other project there, we're no longer affiliated with that one, so that has changed.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, appreciate it, any other questions?
I also want to thank you for coming, and it's always good to be able to place faces with associations, and certainly the people, I was kind of scanning the list of different numbers that you provided in your letter, and it's always good to be reminded of that. One thing every Counselor here knows, and everyone in county government and people at home, there's so much going on, so many good people doing so many different things in the community, it is hard to stay on each other's radar, it's a real struggle. I have about 40 people I own email to, and that's probably just today.
Right.
So, I appreciate the effort to do it. We also need to do a better job at trying to get out to see what your needs are, and somewhere in the middle, we'll meet somewhere on Kirkwood or somewhere, and we'll figure it out, so.
You're welcome anytime, we're still out on Winslow, where they've been for years, and you're welcome to stop by anytime and see what we're doing, and take a look around, we'd love to have you.
Yeah, sounds great.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You other departments looking to do an update? All right, give me a signal in here. The Auditor, Brianna Gregory.
Okay, hello Counsel, just a quick update regarding the Health Fund, we've been discussing that levy, and the required match for the HFI Fund, and so, just for the public, because we opted into the HFI Funds, we are required to put a match in our other Health Fund, Local Fund Number 1159. So, that match is around $900,000. The county's position is that it's already been adequately funded by previous tax levy and other excise taxes. We, the legal team and I, were able to speak with an attorney representing the Indiana Department of Health today, and I think we all came to the same conclusion, that we would be okay continuing that path for another year, as long as, you know, you were willing to put the levy back when necessary, and of course, we all know that that's important, and we'll do so. Another path that might be, one we want to look into a little bit further, would be to ask the Health Department, Health Board, to allow the Correctional Center Health Contract to be funded out of that Health Fund, and then, in order to do so, we would add the levy back at an appropriate amount, and, and then take it from there. So, we spoke to the attorney representing the Health Department about that, and got confirmation by email today, that they thought that would be an acceptable use of the funding. We are still working with the State Board of Accounts to ensure they are also on board, and expect to have a response from them tomorrow. So, just, we're working along here, and we'll give you the information as soon as it's available.
I'm sorry, can you say then, the number again, that we have to, essentially our minimum funding level?
Yes, give me one second, I think I said around 900,000, but I'll give you the exact number. It's actually down the agenda in our packet here, $908,167.
Okay, and the idea is that that funding has to come from taxes and the miscellaneous revenue that's associated with the taxes, not, not from the miscellaneous revenue associated with the user fees?
Exactly.
Okay. And so, basically, next year, or 2026, we, y'all, would have to move, sorry, I have to get used to not saying "we," but we would have to essentially reestablish that 908,000.
Right, if we chose Option 1, Option 2, if everyone's agreeable, and the State Board of Accounts is on board, then we would add that levy back in for 2025, and then also budget the jail health contract.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Counselor Hawke?
Yes, so, thank you, because I know I've been bugging you about this, but I appreciate that. When I looked at it, it looked like as if, and I have that written down, the 1161, is that the right fund that I'm looking at? It looked like it was increasing, it was more than a million dollars. It started, like, this year, it's like 2 million something, and it's going to increase that, it's going to be more than a million, is that right?
As far as the funding being provided by the state?
I'm just looking at the 1161 and seeing what the differences was in the proposed budget, so that's my question, who sets that budget? Does the state tell us what that budget amount has to be, or how do we, how do you arrive at that number?
The Health Department sets their budget for the fund, both, all the Health Funds.
For 1161?
Yes.
And, but do, are we not required to do X, Y, and Z in order to be able to get?
There are requirements that Ms. Kelly would be much more suited to answer, I can do the research and provide it to you, however, I don't have it at my fingertips.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking, of course, is if we start adjusting salaries or positions, and moving it in 1161, then, you know, our natural would seem to me might be different, or whatever, so.
Are you just basically asking how much the state is going to give us in 1161?
Right, and, right, and, when do they give it to, do they give it to us mid-year, like the state's fiscal year is different than ours? So, when might we expect to see each of those allotments?
I believe the funding comes in in January, I'll have to verify, but I believe that's what occurred for last year. And as far as the amount of funding available, that is set by the state, I thought you were asking about the amount the county is budgeting, I apologize.
Yeah. Ms. Kelly, I don't know if you want to offer any comments on this, but you're more than welcome to, if you want to get back to us or look into that, you can. Which one?
Can she just come on up to the mic?
Can you just, for the record, say that, so that the public can hear it?
We have our budget figures for 2025 from the state, because all counties have opted in, so they were able to give us those figures. We did have to submit a budget already, we do it in July of this year, so it doesn't exactly match up, but then we can submit budget revisions going forward.
And do we know what that, what the cap is, what the total amount of money is?
That we're going to get in 1161 from the state, it's 3 million, a little over 3 million. And then, the county match is like 683,000-ish, like right about there, for 2025.
Any other questions for Ms. Kelly at this point? Or the Auditor?
Thanks, sorry.
Thank you very much. All right, Auditor, any further comments on this before we move on?
I just want to clarify, we received a letter with that match figure, and I'm pretty confident it is the 908,167.
All right.
909167?
908167.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other departmental update, going once, twice? Not seeing any hands, so we'll move on. We'll next go to Council Liaison Updates, any Counselor wishing to offer an update? Yes, Counselor Crossley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know Commissioner Otto from the Women's Commission already made the comment, and those were in my updates, so I'm glad we are trying to update the public on everything that's happening, but again, for folks who will tune into this after public comment, once again, the Women's Commission meeting normally is here in the Nat U Hill Room, but because of our meeting that we have for our budget, they are being moved to the showers building north, Room 108, which is 501, 501 North Morton Street. Again, that is showers building north, Room 108, from 5:30 to 7:00 for the Women's Commission regular meetings. And then again, they are really excited and working really hard with the health fair that they are putting on in collaboration with IU Health, and so, once again, that is, just to reiterate with Commissioner Otto had mentioned, it is again Saturday, September 28th, from 8:00 to 11:00 at the Banneker Center, and all are encouraged to participate, so really big deal, and pretty glad of the work that the Women's Commission is putting on. Thank you.
Absolutely. Other Council Liaison Reports. I wanted to make just a quick comment here, and I'm not a liaison necessarily, but I just kind of follow this. Our Capital Improvement Board, which is tasked with managing and directing the affairs of the Monroe County Convention Center, has been exceedingly busy, and that, in my opinion, and I think probably of a few other souls up here, is also an opinion that that is a tremendously good thing. They have moved with really great dispatch towards pursuing the mission of getting the Convention Center done, and the cool thing that's happening is that elected officials and anybody are not slowing that process down, in fact, they're working to use the dollars that have been allocated through the food and beverage tax to do this, get this thing done, and I want to salute them on this mic and say that anyone that has any doubt about them doing a lot, can simply go to, you can simply do a search for Monroe County CIB, and go to their page agenda, and look at the meeting agendas that they have posted, the different documents that they've had, including some of their memorandums, and, and other things, there's just a lot going on, and I think that that's good, it's doing precisely what we thought it would, in getting the mission done, and we, this fall, as a Council, have been able to focus on a lot of other headaches that we have, and not that as a result, and that, friends, I think's a good thing, so I won't belabor it any further. Any other Council Liaison Reports? We'll sing none, we'll move on to Item 7, Consent Agenda Items.
Counsel, I move to approve the following consent agenda items, the July 9th and 23rd, 2024 County Council Meeting Summary Minutes, and July 23rd, Joint Meeting of the County Council and Board of Commissioners as presented, and B, the Clerk's Request and Fund 1000-0001, General Fund Clerk, for the creation of a new account line, 32005, legal notices.
Second.
Okay, that's the consent agenda. Okay, that's the consent agenda items. Are there any questions from Council on the consent agenda items? All right, seeing none. We'll go to the public. Are there any public comments on the consent agenda items? If you have them, come forward here in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing that, there is no public comment, I do want to, before we go to a roll call, I want to make sure Counsel Iverson can talk. Counsel Iverson, can you try making a comment just to make sure? I hear his voice faintly, but I don't hear it loudly. I don't know if we can take a second to adjust that volume, because I want to make sure that he can participate.
Yes.
No, we can't.
We cannot hear him.
I mean, it is.
You can hear?
Just barely.
Is it our outside speaker, or the speakers in the room not picking up the outside as loud as it normally would be? Do we know?
PSD.
Nothing on the TV.
Yes, yeah.
Can we maybe just test with another public member just to double check, to see, is Jim Shelton on there by chance, or hear him off?
Where's Jim?
Where are you, Jim? We need you.
Lisa Service is on there.
Lisa Service, maybe? Could we try unmuting her to double check it?
Can't hear you. No.
And Counsel Iverson, we cannot hear you.
What?
So now Lisa Service, is she unmuted?
No. So.
I lied. I think she is.
Okay, I could hear them on my computer, so what we could do, somebody unmute their computer like this and have him say "aye" when it's time to vote.
So it really is the room, it's not his?
If Lisa Service is having the issue, and he's having the issue, there's something.
We've got to get this straightened out.
Yes, I mean, I'm just trying to stopgap, not like, this is how we do it now.
Let's, let's try.
Could he, could he just call in on the telephone?
He has to be visible.
He could be visible on teams and audible on phone.
Yeah.
That's true. You could log into the meeting twice, is what they're saying.
Public has to be able to see and hear him. Well, we can do that.
Well, let's do this. Let's do this. If I, to get us through this, Peter, leave your camera on. I'm going to call your cell phone, and you're going to be able to comment. The issue is, though, we have to be able to take public comment. Yeah, that's one thing, but we have, we've got to, let's do this. We're going to go to recess for five minutes while I kind of figure out our best path forward here, because I've got to be able to allow for all engagement in this meeting. So, we're going to go to recess for five. I apologize very much, and we'll see what we can do here. All right, thank you.
I could try.
Here we go. Where in the world are we on this agenda?
We are in Highway.
Highway.
Yep.
We were voting on the consent agenda.
No, we were getting ready for the vote.
We have a vote.
So we have the consent agenda item. There were no public comments, as I recall, about ten minutes ago. Let's go to a roll call vote of the counselors.
Okay. Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
And Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you, everybody. That's the best consent agenda item we ever had. Let's move on to Highway Department's request, which was the old twelve. It's now eight-ish.
Eight A.
Eight A.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway's request for a fund-to-fund transfer of cash from Fund Eleven Sixty-nine zero dash zero 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 zero, local road and street, in the amount of thirty-three thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety cents, to Fund Eighty-one Seventy-three dash zero 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 zero, pedestrian trail crossing improvement.
Second.
All right, we have Ms. Lisa Ridge with us. Ms. Ridge?
Good evening. Thanks for moving me up. I appreciate it. I'll be quick. This is our county match for the areas that we will be installing the flashing beacons at the different trail locations around the county. So, this is our portion to put into the grant fund.
Questions from Council? Counselor McKim?
And so, this is not the Hawks, these are not Hawk signals, right?
They're not.
These are the ones that just flat, okay. I like those better.
Yeah, we do too.
Yeah.
Sure, Peter.
Thanks.
All right. Other comments or questions, Counselor Wiltz?
What's a Hawk signal?
If you go out to Vernal Pike, to Loesch Road, that's a Hawk signal. If you go to Gifford Road, to that, for that cars trailhead, that's a Hawk signal, overhead.
There's like, there's a three, there are three lights, and it's, it's a different pattern than your usual traffic light, but a person has to push a button and then wait for this.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing to do with the bird at all. It's just.
Correct.
Yeah. Somebody at home wanted me to ask that. Counselor Hawke?
Say that those trails are really being heavily used over there near Loesch Road. I was by there several times this past week, and yay, Rock, it's being used.
So we won't be replacing those Hawk signals at that location, but it's seven other locations that do not have any type of signalized notification for the motorists or the pedestrians.
Other comments or questions for Ms. Ridge? All right. Seeing no more Council comments, let's go to public comments. If you have any, come forward here in the Nat U Hill, and you can go to that table or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Let's go to Item B of Highway.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway's request of a fund-to-fund transfer cash from Fund Eleven Eight, Eighty-one Sixty-one dash zero 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 zero, Sample Road Phase One, in the amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-three cents, Fund Twelve Twenty-nine dash zero 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 zero, Lloyd Distribution, in the amount of one hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-nine cents, and Fund Eleven Sixty-nine dash zero 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 zero, Local Road and Street, in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven three, seventy-three dollars and sixty-five cents, totaling three hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventeen cents, to be transferred in Fund Eighty-one Sixty-two dash zero 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 zero, Sample Road Phase Two.
Second. Ms. Ridge?
So, we have been working closely with the Auditor's Office to clean up some of these grant funds. There was a little bit of confusion on how the construction matches work and going, since we built these funds about three years ago. So, this is just basically cleaning up those funds and transferring the amounts to get the Sample Road Phase Two project to a zero balance.
Okay. Questions from Council? I see no questions. Let's see if the public has any comments. If you do, come forward here in the Nat U Hill, go to the table or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Right, last of Highway, Item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway's request for a fund-to-fund transfer of cash from Fund Eleven Thirty-five dash zero 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 zero, Cumulative Bridge, in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars, to Fund Eighty-one Seventy-six dash zero 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 zero, Eagleson Bridge, number nine twenty-two.
Second.
Yeah, Ms. Ridge?
And this is our local match for right-of-way engineering services, for right-of-way acquisition for the Eagleson Bridge replacement.
And this is the bridge where the state said, if you'll take this, we'd appreciate it, and we said, of course.
Was, if it was replaced, yes.
Replaced. We'll take any bridge that's replaced. All right, questions, comments from counselors? All right, seeing none. Let's see if the public has comments. If you do, come forward here in the Nat U Hill, go to the table or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ridge. That's going to take us now to nine boards and commission appointments.
Counsel, I move to approve the appointments to the OPA's Settlement Commission of Peter Iverson, completing a two-year term, which expires on December thirty-first, 2025, and Andre Butler, completing a two-year term, which expires on December thirty-first, 2024.
Second.
All right. So, pardon me, any questions from Council? Yeah, Counsel Wiltz?
They're staggering the terms. I'm just kind of catching up on this, so that's why it's just a tiny little term right now.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions, comments from counselors? Just have note on this one. Counselor Iverson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to extend my gratitude to the Board of Judges who helped out with this nomination today. We are very grateful for their help in helping us select someone to join me in sitting on this board.
Thank you very much, Counselor Iverson, for your service. Just for the public's knowledge, we do not take public comments. It's been reminded to me numerous times by counselors, and I appreciate it, on public appointees, simply because we appreciate these individuals coming forward, and there's certainly, if folks have comments on that, they can always reach out to counselors in writing. Other comments or questions, seeing none, let's go to a roll call on the appointments.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, that takes us to Item, I believe this is ten technically, and it's the first of the Health Department requests.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to amend the 2024 Salary Ordinance and Fund Eleven Sixty-one dash zero 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 zero, Local Public Health Services, and add account line, ten one one four, Environmental Health Specialist Foods, ten one sixteen, Senior Environmental Health Specialist Foods, and ten one seventeen, Senior Environmental Health Specialist General.
Second.
Right. Ms. Kelly? Welcome. We've got Lori Kelly, our Health Administrator.
Yes, good evening. So, this is essentially just to update the salary ordinance. We changed some positions and did a swap, and we just need to make sure that that is reflected in the salary ordinance for this year.
Okay. Questions, comments from counselors?
No, I'm sorry.
Counselor McKim?
So, I know that there's some limit on the amount of the local, of the Public Health Services Fund that can be used for like onsite food inspection and that sort of thing. Is this, I assume we're still going to be well within that limit?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other comments or questions?
I was talking.
Yeah, in your head. Okay. Seeing any, no other questions on this from counselors, I'll ask if there's any public comment on the item. If you have public comment, you'll come forward here in the Nat U Hill to the podium, or you'll raise your hand on teams, and we'll recognize you. All right, seeing no public comment, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, that takes us now to the added item on the agenda, which would be ten A one.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to amend the 2024 Salary Ordinance and Fund Eleven Sixty-one dash zero 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 zero, Local Health, Local Public Health Services, Account Line Ten One Seventeen, to move the Senior Environmental Health Specialist General and Fa, and General from thirty-five hours to forty hours within effective date of September eighth, 2024.
Second.
All right, Ms. Kelly?
Yes, so we are requesting to transition that position from thirty-five to forty hours, just to help provide some additional cross-coverage in the department with the office hours and the field work, and also to be able to provide additional assistance to the manager with backup coverage.
Questions or comments from counselors? Counselor McKim?
Okay, just to make sure I didn't miss the line number. This is the same one that we just moved from eleven fifty-nine to eleven sixty-one?
Correct.
The third one that we just moved, okay.
Other comments or questions? All right. Yeah, Counsel Wiltz?
So, I'm looking at just kind of some of the documentation that our staff has provided around your organizational chart and how that's changing a little bit. And it looks like to me this is going to be the only person at that kind of level in your department that will be at forty hours. Is that correct? And is that long-term, what you're anticipating?
That is correct. Whether the other positions transition into forty hours, I think, is still yet to be seen. I don't think that it's something that we need to do for all positions right now, but just slowly as we assess maybe where some of those gaps are, transitioning additional positions as needed.
Thanks.
Other comments, questions from counselors? Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, we'll go to public comments. If you have public comments, come forward here in the Nat U Hill Room to this podium or raise your hand on team. Counselor Hawke, did you have a comment?
Yeah, trying to follow along where, where each of these positions fall. A lot of the descriptions were having to do with the clinic and who they would be reporting to and so forth. Would this person have had anything included in the job description that would have been reporting by a defunct clinic that we no longer have?
Are you speaking of the environmental position?
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out, since all of those job descriptions, many of them were saying, oh, they have to report to this one and report to that one.
Correct.
And since we don't have a clinic anymore, how many of these positions are changed from that job description that will no longer have that responsibility?
Sure, so, the, our intention is still to rework the Director of Clinical Services position. So, many of the positions that are on the proposed org chart would still be reporting to that position if it were approved. All of the positions related to futures have been excluded from this packet. Does that answer better?
And this position does not report to a, one, to that particular position. This is strictly to the, it's a senior position that reports to the Health, Health Administrator.
Right? This position reports to the environmental.
Environmental Health, yes, sorry.
Correct.
Counsel Wiltz?
So, now I'm looking at that, that level on the org chart where, to which this position reports. So, the, it looks like you've proposed changing their, them from various names to directors, which makes a lot of sense.
What page that org chart is to save us the finding?
It was just the thing I had.
I think that one was inadvertently left out. I.
I think that one was inadvertently left out. So I'm getting ready to pop it up on the, yeah, sorry.
I saw it somewhere in there.
But I'm curious about the fact that it looks like those are at 35 hours as well. So having a 40-hour a week person reporting to a 35-hour a week person seems strange. And tell me more about the logic, please.
Sure. So I can definitely see that viewpoint now. So our Environmental Services Manager has been outperforming a lot of field work to help things moving along, whereas typically that position would be spending more time covering office hours. So for example, this position provides a little bit of that additional coverage to cover those office hour gaps in the morning and then in the afternoon. And the other employees are, they're like on alternative work schedules. So some of them come in early and some of them come in later. So there are gaps where essentially we don't have anyone in the office. If someone from the public comes in and they want to ask questions, or they want to purchase a permit, this helps give us that additional coverage. But I can see what you mean by not having that manager at 40 hours.
Yeah, it seems like that would make sense to kind of at least across the tiers, keep them even and then at least above the guys below them.
Yes, and some of it's about trying to find that balance with what the work structure is that employees are looking for and department needs.
I have a question. And I, I just, and this may be just a comment, but I think that we have to make sure that in all of this, we've got what employees want and we've got what the department needs. But we, what guarantees do we have about what the public needs? Because when they go into that office, they need to be able to get the service that they want on their time per their schedule in a way that works. I mean, that's the whole nature of public service. If, if we weren't doing that, none of us would be here. So I mean, how does that factor in so that's guaranteed?
Well, so the intention with the alternative flex schedule for the employees was to make sure that we were covering those full hours of operation to the public. So this could be a matter of transitioning away from that and going back to an eight to four where everyone is kind of working that and not trying to find an additional coverage from one 40-hour position.
So this, this 35 to 40 gets that done? Is that your opinion?
Yes, they would be there for the full time.
All right. I just want to make sure in the equation that's always there. Because it's, I mean, you know, we could do these meetings at 2:00 in the morning, but it would serve no one, the public. But I guarantee you, it'd be the emptiest thing on most of our schedules. But it wouldn't do it. So I just, I always like to make sure that it mixes there. Other comments or questions from counselors? Counselor Hawke?
I'm just considering what Councilmember Wiltz stated, and I think that's very important for us to remember that because that, that will soon be saying, oh, well now, the person that I'm over is making more or whatever. So I think we have to look at that. And so the person that they're reporting to needs to make sure that those hours are covered. Just rearrange the, if you've got two people in an office, you don't both leave at the same time. Oh, I mean, if you care about serving the public.
Right, yeah. And I think the flexible schedule is critical to making sure that a public office like yours is open and available to the public, for sure. And I'm certainly not trying to micromanage, but it is, you know, just trying to think and get through. Thanks.
Other comments or questions? Well, on that, let's go to any public comment on it, on this item, item 10A1. If you have comments, come forward to the podium here in the Nat U Hill, or raise your hand on teams. Seeing no comments, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
I believe, don't we have to do it again in the next meeting?
Yes.
I was going to say that.
This will, okay, all right. So we will hear this again next time. Let's move on to 10B. Thanks for noting that.
And when we do that, can we have the dollar amounts put with it? Because when we vote on a salary ordinance and add more hours onto it, we ought to see the numbers. And I'm not seeing that here at all. I just think this is not a complete request.
It, I believe, was sent to you today. Because it, I was working on budget stuff on Friday, and I didn't get to include the fiscal impacts on Friday. So you should have received that today in an email, and that's what I'm going to double check.
We did. And I've got that, that particular, this particular one is definitely included in.
Okay, that's what I thought.
We're receiving all day long, new emails, new information, whatever. And it's like, we don't all just sit in front of our computer all day long.
Well, today's when I had time to do it.
I'm not objecting there. I'm just saying it's hard to vote on something when we could have had, unless somebody didn't, when this was read off, was numbers included just now? No.
You can't remember that.
Well, that's a reason for my no vote. I didn't have the information. Thank you.
Move on to 10B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for the creation of a new account line, 32-740 Immunization Expense, and Fund 81-38-9625 Immunization and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in amount of $187,303.80 in the Services category.
Second.
All right, Ms. Kelly?
This is standard grant funding that helps to support our public health nursing that we contract with IU Health. This does, a large portion of this covers salary expenses. We also purchased new vaccine refrigerators with this funding this year and a small amount for other supplies.
Questions from counselors? Not seeing any questions from counselors. So on this one, we'll go to public comment. If you have public comment on this item, you can come forward here in the Nat U Hill to the podium, or you can raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing no public comment, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's move to item 10C. Actually.
Yeah, it would be nine.
It's not.
Nine. On your, because you guys move things around, so you're looking for 9C.
This is the.
TANF.
TANF.
This is TANF. And this item, because of recent Futures Clinic issues, this item needs to not be on here. Is that correct, Michelle or Ms. Turner King?
No, it's TANF. It's not the same thing as Futures.
I, I don't know. I would defer to the auditor with regards to, this is appropriations for the Futures Clinic and for TANF. So I don't know why you would need to appropriate it.
But we should go ahead and do the motion.
Let's go ahead and ask about it.
Hear about it, and then we can vote it down if it needs to be voted down.
It's up there.
Okay. Oh, okay. I'm going to take a stab at this. Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for the, for additional appropriations for the TANF Futures, 81-50, or 81-50-9624, and Fund 10-071 Nurse Practitioner, the amount of $2,693.13, Fund Item Number 21-112 LARQ, and the amount of $5,155.20, 25-190 Medications, $500, 38-110 Services and Charges, $650, for a total amount of $8,998.33.
Second.
All right, got a motion and second. Ms. Kelly?
So this is program income or revenue from insurance reimbursements, LARQ reimbursements, while the program was still being administered. So this is to cover those expenses. We are required to continue seeking payments until all payments have been collected. While we're in the closeout period, we can still cover some of these costs. Again, because these are costs prior to the actual end of the contract period. After our closeout period ends, we, well, I'm actually going to be working with the Auditor's Office next week to set up a process where the insurance reimbursements and such that we collect, we will then transfer directly to the Indiana Family Health Council.
How, how long do you anticipate that closeout process to be financially?
Hopefully not years. But, I mean, we have old collections that we're still trying to collect on payments for.
All right. We'll go to questions, comments from counselors, and I jumped the gun there, shouldn't have. Counselor Wiltz?
So you, you indicated, I believe, I heard you say it was insurance that you're collecting from?
That's part of it.
Uh huh. Okay, so it's not Medicaid reimbursement, it's not individual payments, is it primarily?
It's really a mixture. It's hard to say like how much of each, but this could just be sliding scale payments, bills that need to be collected on. This is insurance reimbursement, so it's a mixture.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I'd just like to comment that if we're spending more money trying to get money from people who don't have the money, then we may just be chasing ourselves around in a circle. So I would like to not think that this would go on for a great deal of time because you're going to be paying staff to go try to collect money from people who receive the services who might not have the money to pay it, or they would have paid it.
Other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go to public comments. If you have public comments, come forward in the Nat U Hill to the podium, or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's move to item 10D.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to approve the following amended job descriptions of Health, of the Health Administrator, Assistant Registrar, Financial Manager, and Environmental Health Services Director.
Second.
Ms. Kelly?
These were just job descriptions that had gone through the PAC in the WIS process, and we are seeking approval for these amendments to officially update our job descriptions.
PAC Chair, do you have any comments on any of this?
Sure, you can see in the packets that the WIS recommendations for each of these job descriptions is included. We did hear this during a PAC meeting, and I believe Michelle has the organizational chart for the Health Department detailing each of these, if, Mr. President, you should desire to see that.
Got it right here. Counselor McKim?
So just, these four that we're talking about right in this motion, there is no change to the classification, right? Is that?
There was no change in the classification based upon the WIS recommendation.
Right, for these four?
Correct.
Right. Other comments or questions from counselors? All right, we'll go to public comment on this item. If you have them, come forward to the Nat U Hill, pardon me, Teaching Day, my mind's not here. Come forward to this podium in the Nat U Hill. We want to hear it, or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Pause the vote a second. I think Counselor Hawke had a question.
Clarification. We're not, we're just putting it in as WIS had it, right?
Let's get clarification on that. Maybe Ms. Turner King or Michelle.
There's no changes to the classification or the level.
These are just changes to the wording of the job description.
The wording of the job descriptions.
Job descriptions are being as WIS indicated, okay.
Correct.
Yes.
You heard him.
Yes.
There's a yes on that.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
One more time.
Yes.
There you go.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you. Let's go to item E, 10E.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to approve the amended job descriptions and to simultaneously amend Account Line 10-103 Registrar, 40 hours. Comment C, non-exempt to vital records and administrative support director, 40 hours. Pat D, exempt and account lines 10-183 Public Health Liaison, 35 hours. Pat B to Public Health Preparedness Director, 35 hours. Pat D, exempt with an effective date of September 8th, 2024.
Second.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes, so these are just two more of our job descriptions that went through the PAC and the WIS process. These did come back with higher classifications at Pat D. We do not currently have the position, the Public Health Liaison position is not currently filled. So this director position will go through the process of posting to the public the 30-day notice before we actually recruit and fill that position.
Questions from counsel. Counsel McKim?
I mean, I know we talked about these extensively in PAC meeting, but you know, this is a big enough reorganization of the department. Can you just give us a few words, showing, you know, telling us and the public what kind of what your vision for all these positions are, that in particular are the ones that we're changing now? What are, substantively, substantively, what are you trying to do?
Sure. So the main vision and the main view of this is being able to really get some security and some cross-coverage built in throughout the Health Department. So this structure, the positions, having a main division leader or director and positions that fall under that, really make sure that we have cross-coverage, that we can fill gaps if there are vacancies, if there are vacations. We have other positions that are trained that can keep services being administered. So essentially, like Public Health Preparedness, for example, we had the employee that was in that position, and they had actually accepted the new position of the Behavioral Health and Wellness Coordinator, but given the storms that we had here in the county, opted to stay in that position because there was no one else that could step in and fill those duties in that role. So this just helps to provide additional backup coverage for the department.
And so, and just looking at the org chart here, it looks like, so under the Health Administrator, you plan to have, what, four director-level positions? Is that right? The vital records and administrative support director, which is uh one of the positions that we're considering in this motion. The Public Health Preparedness Director, which is the other one considered in this motion. And then also the Environmental Health Services Director and the Clinical Services and Care Manager Director.
Uh, that is, um, yes, that's correct.
Management Director, okay, thank you.
I wondered to ask, how long is the, so of these registrar, that's filled, public health liaison not filled, is that right?
Uh, yes, because that's a, a new position.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. Other comments, Counselor Hogg.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, I was not at the PAC meeting, I had car problems. Um, but what I'm looking at here is that the ten one oh three uh is going from fifty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars uh from a Comet C all the way up to a PAT D with a salary of seventy thousand seven hundred uh dollars. Now, that is a huge change, and it doesn't require a degree or of any sort. And seventy thousand dollars, I think, is, i- is this what WIS approved?
Yes.
I've, I wouldn't vote for that, so, I mean, that's, that is a gigantic jump. And remember, even if it's going into eleven sixty-one, which I, you know, recognize, if, if that's what's happening, uh, we still have to do matches with it. And, and the next one, the position hasn't been filled, but that's also going up to seventy thousand dollars. That, you, and I understand that the board wanted to see some adjustments in salaries, but that is one gigantic adjustment. And it doesn't say if they're, if they've been there for ten years or fifteen years, like we've seen some salaries uh jump up because they've got that, that years of jump on it. But to go from fifty-two to seventy thousand seven hundred is um I think unacceptable.
This, this is a three-year person, currently as the Registrar, is a three-year person at a Comet C. Uh, WIS evaluated it, made it a PAT D, and that's the salary that we have on our grid for that, you know, for that particular level. So I just wanted, that's why it, it's at a level three, so it's a three-year step, that person in it currently.
Other comments, questions? Did, I, Counselor Hogg, did you have something else? I thought I heard a voice. Counselor Wiltz.
Um, just confirming that there was no change to the job description on this one, is that correct?
Uh, for the Registrar? No, there were changes, um, and if I can, maybe just expand upon uh this Registrar position again. So this position um since the fall of twenty twenty-three has been um increasingly taking on additional uh backup duties uh for my position. This position does step in and will um play that backup person for my position, like with payroll um and like approval processes um in my absence. So there are a lot of additional tasks that have been given to this position that was taken into consideration with these changes. Um, I currently don't have another position, so I had to be able to find a position that can provide that backup coverage to my role.
That's what McKim.
Yeah, I kind of saw that as a, almost as a chief deputy position, as well as um vital records director. That's kind of the way that it read. But all the, the redline version of all the uh uh job descriptions are in the uh, the PAC packet, and we can see how they, you know, how everything's been, been changed, but that, I know those positions did change significantly.
Yeah, Counselor McKim.
Unless Counselor Wiltz, is she done?
Yes, I'm finished, thank you.
I mean, I, I guess, I don't, I don't think that, that simply the, the difference between the old salary and the new is what we're really supposed to be looking at here. We're supposed to be looking at, I mean, that, about, at the position and how it's, and how it's changed, and whether or not it accurately reflects what the job is going to do, what the job is supposed to do. But simply saying that we think that's too big a raise for a person to get, I don't think is, I, I don't think that's the way we want to manage uh, manage positions. And I don't think Counselor Hogg, hopefully, was not trying to say that.
That's not like, not at all, what, what I'm saying, not at all.
Counselor Munson.
So, other members of the council often take their lead from the, the PAC discussions and their findings and concerns. And it seems that this is uh still very unsettled. Am, am I right on this?
PAC, the PAC rec, the PAC vote will not ref, because we had different attendants at different meetings, rise. Counselor Iverson, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, we uh, I would, I would encourage, I, I agree with my, my colleague on PAC, Councilmember McKim. All of the uh job descriptions are in today's packets. The WIS recommendations, uh, given their rationale for the recommendations are in the packet. And we heard from Michelle that this is in line with our um salary grid, which uh we have uh procedures and policies in place uh to utilize because it impacts so many people. So I uh certainly would encourage folks, if they're curious, you can go back and watch the PAC meeting. All those are recorded on uh CATS, uh, but we endeavor to put as much information as possible in these council packets uh so that you have the same amount of information as we have uh on PAC.
Counselor McKim.
And, and I will say that actually, I'm, I'm going back to the WIS memo right now uh for the position. And actually, it is, they, they analyzed it as a new position. Not, I mean, we're, we're essentially reusing the, the line, but they did analyze it as a, uh, and refer to it as a new position. Uh, and they did state, we have assessed this position respective of other positions in the PAC job category and factored the position using the FES job classification system. Uh, we factored it at five-ten PAT factor points. Therefore, it is recommended the position be classified at PAT D exempt and compensated within the PAT D range. It is recommended the position be approved.
Well, that's a horse of a different color, for sure. Other comments, questions from counselors? I'm hearing that we might be approaching uh, done with all that, and let's see if the public has comments then. If you do, come forward in the Nat U Hill to the podium, or raise your hand on teams. Seeing no public comments, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hogg.
No.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one, it will need to come back for a second vote.
All right, let's go to ten F.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and possible approval of the Health Department's request to approve the job descriptions for the Assistant Registrar, Disease Intervention Specialist Program Coordinator and Disease Intervention Specialist. The department believes the classifications for these positions are classified too low and is requesting to amend the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance and fund eleven sixty-one dash zero 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 Local Public Health by increasing the classifications above the WIS recommendations as presented on the agenda with an effective date of September eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. On this one, I think if PAC members have any additional information, you can share with us on this. It would probably be pretty helpful. Counselor Iverson.
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, uh, if, if it, uh, we're okay with you, uh, I'd like to hear from Ms. Kelly first, and then maybe we can weigh in.
Thank you, I apologize, I should have done that. Ms. Kelly.
Um, sure, so, let's see, with regards to, um, and I don't have the org chart in front of me, but if you have one up there, uh, for example, if we are looking at the Disease Interventional Specialist and the Program Coordinator, uh, so the Program Coordinator is currently responsible for supervising um onboarding new employees, um covering twelve counties, um uh, working on standing order medication protocols. Uh, so, in, in my opinion, these positions, those two positions are just simply classified um too low for the job duties. Um, in addition, um only state authorized in Indiana DIS are allowed to investigate HIV cases. These positions have to ensure correct treatment of patients and partners. They are performing contact tracing of partners. Um, they are out in clinical settings and field settings, uh, conducting case management and interviewing techniques. Um, and all of these skills, I just think um should be at a higher level than what they're currently classified as. And especially if you're considering them in relation to other positions that we have and where those classifications are in the Health Department.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kelly. Let's, now we can jump back to Counselor Iverson and any other PAC member that wishes to weigh in.
Sure, uh, counsel, you'll see uh in your PAC today uh on uh page eighty-eight is that Disease Intervention Specialist uh recommendation from Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy. Uh, their rationale for not changing it is there on page eighty-eight of the packets. Um, and, and so uh what we at uh PAC did uh with these uh numerous uh uh job descriptions uh and the classifications was uh we thought that this would be something that you, of course, counsel, uh, needed to weigh in on. Um, and you can see uh, you know, again, on page eighty-eight uh and previous pages and subsequent pages uh for all four of these job descriptions, the rationale that WIS gave, um, it would be uh, you know, I'm interested to hear what counsel says, this, of course, is counsel's decision. Um, and um, you know, again, the rationale from WIS uh is, is in your packet.
All right.
Um, I can speak just briefly on the Assistant Registrar positions, too. Um, I, I think I just want to say, um, I'm not sure there's a clear understanding of what these positions are actually performing in the office. Um, they're not just simply greeting the public or answering the phone or uh taking payments. Uh, they do a lot more than that, they are the front-facing individuals who are dealing with everyone who comes into the office, answering all of the phone calls. They have to have at least enough knowledge about every single service that's being provided in the Health Department uh to be able to provide information to the public and connect the public to the right individuals. Um, they're also responsible for developing workarounds when we have internal systems that fail, uh, which recently happened with um our program that they use to issue birth and death certificates. We lost access to that program. Um, if these employees had not developed an internal workaround process, we would not be issuing birth and death certificates um from two thousand eight and later. So um it's really just a higher level than simply a clerical position.
Counselor McKim.
Um, are any of these, or I guess how many of these positions are currently vacant?
Uh, none of them, they're all filled.
Ms. Turner King.
I wanted to remind counsel, too, when considering this request, that these are non-exempt positions. So this is a situation similar to the election supervisor, that if you move them to the higher salary, it doesn't change the exemption status. So these individuals could earn comp time at the higher rate.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson, uh, Counselor Crossley, you saw your hand.
You want me to go, or Counselor Crossley?
You, you, she helped me see you.
All right, thank you. Um, I, I'll just uh mention for counsel that the Assistant Registrar position um is on page ninety-two of today's packets. Uh, and do note, uh, this will be the second time that we have reviewed this in a three-year time span. Uh, February twenty twenty-one, we actually reviewed this as, or we asked Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy to review this as well. So um it, the, the process that we go through is we have a uh job description, redline job description, and uh the questionnaire that the department head fills out. That's what we give uh to Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy, is directly from the department head. So uh again, the rationale is there on page ninety-two.
All right, Counselor Crossley.
I was just gonna ask, just for clarification to Councilmember Iverson's point. Wasn't this also at the, uh, the Assistant Registrar position? It looks like, I'm trying to look, so this has come up again in PAC earlier this year at the February meeting, is that?
Yeah, we, we have been very uh uh busy um to work with the Health Department, to do a lot, I think, uh, President Deckard used the term reorganization. There's been a lot of work in the department, and I uh, you know, I'm hesitant to speak for uh Ms. Kim Schell, but uh we've been working very closely uh with the department to, you, you know, work to try and get things right in the department. Um, but uh, Councilmember Crossley, you are correct uh that uh these positions have come up before PAC numerous times.
And I want to say that um the reason this one, uh, the Assistant Registrar, it did come up. The uh department made those changes, and then during a meeting, they withdrew um that because they wanted to take it back and work some more on it, and because that is when, uh, during that period of time is when Molly and I stepped in to help, because this is the large, larger re- restructuring. So we were asked, Molly and I were asked to help with the department. So this was one of them, yes, it was presented, it was presented to PAC, but at that moment in time, it was withdrawn. It has not come to counsel for approval, so it, yes, it has been done at least twice.
Counselor Hogg.
Uh, yes, as I recall, earlier in the year, when they uh, they came forward with the, with the Health Board, and they were talking about uh that the people were, had a lot, and they were really busy doing their job. And it was made clear to them, I, I think uh, uh, Councilmember McKim said it, and I concurred, that that wasn't a reason to change the classification. If they needed more hours, then you changed their hours, or you added an additional person, but you didn't change the classification. And so it isn't that, and so we encouraged them, if they felt like that uh wasn't correct, to, to take another look at it. And then, of course, there was the delay uh when we had a meeting and the Health Department was scheduled and didn't come, and didn't say, I can't be there. And so I'm only making that clear because in the paper, it made it sound like as if we hadn't worked with them, and I think we have, I think we've worked overtime with them, trying to get, get it right. So, just want to make that clear.
Uh, can, and can I speak just briefly, I guess? So, in one of the, again, when we came back around the second time, I think part of this is, um, again, a lot of additional duties with assisting my position began falling on that Registrar. Registrar duties then have to trickle down to um other positions within that. So they have been taking on additional duties and responsibilities um above and beyond what they were before. And they're going to continue um taking on those higher-level duties because um the Registrar position is really serving as that backup and helping me in a lot of capacities now.
Counselor McKim.
But are those additional duties reflected in the job descriptions that have been reviewed and that are in front of us?
Uh, around the second time, yes.
Okay, so, so we do also have an, an issue where if uh, if this is voted down, this request is voted down, we still need to vote on the job, we still need to pass the job descriptions. Otherwise, we have people who are doing something that doesn't match their job description. So, even if we don't approve the classification, this will have to come back.
Can we, can we separate the job descriptions from the classification?
Yes.
Tonight?
I certainly think we could.
So, I move that we do that, that we separate the job descriptions approval from the increased classification and salary ordinance components of the original motion.
Second.
All right, Counsel, we have a motion to divide this question between job descriptions and then the salary components. Any discussion on that motion to divide the question? None. So, what we will do is go to a roll call on the question to divide this between job descriptions and salaries. And so, with that, Ms. Schell, roll call. We'll take these one at a time if this passes.
Okay. I'm sorry, who's seconded? So, I, thank you. All right. So, on the amendment to separate the job descriptions from the salary ordinance amendment, Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimous.
Okay, so, we've got a divided question, and we're going to take these in two parts, the first being the job descriptions themselves. Counselors, do you have any comments on the job descriptions themselves? Or that motion, I guess I should say, or the description? I am not seeing any discussion upon that. And so, on the question of the job descriptions, if there is no other comment, we will go to public comment on that item. So, public, if you wish to comment on the job descriptions that we are voting to amend, you may do so. So, raise your hand on teams or come forward in the NatU Hill. Sorry if we're making this as clear as mud, but we're trying to get work done.
Job descriptions as provided to WIS.
And it says provided to WIS and released from WIS.
And in the packet.
And in the packet. All right. Seeing no public comment, we will go to a roll call on the job descriptions question.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, now, we return to the second part of the original question, which is on the salary changes that were proposed by Ms. Kelly. Counselor Wiltz.
I would like to propose an amendment to the amended motion and separate the comments from the.
Yes.
Just checking to make sure they were all passed, yes. So, if we could separate the two registrar positions from the DIS positions and look at those separately.
There's been a motion to separate this between comment and PAT positions as identified on the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second from Counselor Munson. So, with that, any discussion on this, dividing this question?
I'm eager to hear where this is going, but, sure.
We'll watch together. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call on this divided question of the PATs and the comments, or comments and the PATs.
Okay. Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
No.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passes, majority six to one.
Okay. We're going to take this in now two parts, and we'll start first with the comments, because on the agenda, they were first. And so, on the comment positions, which in the packet would have been 10-104 Assistant Registrar, 10-105 Assistant Registrar, both in the "from" and the "to" of the agenda. All right, Counselors, comments, questions? We're going to look to Counselor Wiltz.
Yeah, are you now? So, I separated them because, to me, they're fundamentally different questions. I think they were grouped because they all received a negative recommendation from WIS, perhaps, but that's really the only thing I see the two having in common. And I wanted to look at the question around comments separately, A, because they're at 35 hours, and to the point that was raised earlier, coverage can be, can be enhanced by changing their hours without changing their, their classification. And also, we have a lot of comments employed in county government. I personally think that we should raise, I mean, we did last year, we did an extra raise for comments. I am all about that. I get a little nervous about going against our own classification rules and system for two positions, when I think we should be looking at things more holistically. So, that's why I wanted to consider them separately.
All right. So, we've got that from Counselor Wiltz. Other comments from Counselors?
Only that I would agree with what's been said earlier and has been recommended to the department multiple times, that the best path forward to getting these two positions, the comments, higher salaries, is to go from 35 hours to 40 hours. And that I would support. I do not support, it's not that I never would support going against WIS's recommendations, I just haven't seen any evidence that they were incorrect or that they overlooked a vital component of the, of the position.
Other discussion on these comment lines? I tend to believe with what Counselor Wiltz is saying about looking at comments universally, when we come in tomorrow night, we're dealing with the budget again, Part IV of VI, and I don't know what money's there for it, I'll be real honest with you. I think that's a cola, comments, and all that is a discussion, and I've not seen the numbers there yet, but I hope that, I hope somewhere in there, there's something that we can talk about, I just, I'm not quite certain yet. I do know that there's a moment for looking at WIS and making another evaluation, I'm not quite there yet on this one. I've not quite heard it myself, and I know that they're not infallible. Gosh, I could go to every elected official in the department head and I'll hear that, but I'm not quite there yet, doesn't mean I wouldn't be sometime. Other comments or discussion, and this is just on comments? Okay. Well, we will go to public comment on just the comment positions. If you have any, come forward in the NatU Hill room or raise your hand on teams. All right. Seeing no public comment, we will go to a roll call on the comment item.
And a yes means you plan to change it, and a no means we're going to take the original dollar.
Yes, means change, no means stay the same.
Thank you. Just for the record, yes on this vote means that you're supporting the change, no means that you are not supporting that change on the comments. Okay. We'll go to a roll call.
Counselor Crossley?
No.
Counselor Munson?
No.
Counselor Hogg?
No.
Counselor McKim?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
No.
Counselor Wiltz? Counselor Deckard?
No.
Motion fails.
All right.
Seven to, zero to seven.
So, now, on the divided question, of a divided question, we're going to turn to the PAT requests and go to comments on that. And this is, to be specific, is from the agenda, it's line 10107, DIS Program Coordinator, and 10108, Disease Intervention Specialist. Comments from Counselors? Counselor Hogg.
Just to note that, following what Counselmember McKim had said earlier, in this particular one, they had, it does say 40 hours on that first one, on the 10-107. It already included the 40 hours as it is presently with no change. So, I would like to move that line 10107 not be changed from what it is presently. That's Program Coordinator?
I don't think there are any changes to the hours for those positions.
No, it's currently a 40-hour.
Right. That, what they're asking for is a change in the, from a PAT B to a PAT C.
Correct.
So, I'm recommending that we accept WIS's recommendation.
All right, so, that would be a no vote on this motion.
Here's the org chart.
Thank you.
So, just while Counselor Wiltz looks at that, Counselor Hogg, do you want to not do a motion and just a potential for a no vote on that?
Okay.
You don't want to do a motion on it, just a no vote?
I mean, that would be the motion. I would make it that we accept the recommendation of WIS.
On 10107?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion from Counselor Hogg to accept the recommendation from WIS on 10107.
But we already have a motion on the floor that's the flip of that, so.
Right.
Counselor Hogg gets what she wants by voting no on this motion.
I think she's moving to.
We have two together, so is she wanting to separate the two?
I think she's moving to amend a new motion out of the old motion.
I was just trying to move this forward, sorry.
Let me see if it gets a second, Counselor, and that may answer our question. Do we have a second? Counselor Hogg, it dies for lack of a second. And so, we go back to the underlying 10107, 10108 question on those two positions. Any discussion on that, Counselors? All right. So, this, we'll go to a public comment. If you have any, come forward in the NatU Hill to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Okay. Just so that I'm straight on what's going on, this is a vote to increase the classifications. Yes, meaning you want to increase, no, meaning you don't want to increase. Am I correct?
No, yes, no accepts the WIS.
Okay.
Finding.
All right. Sorry. Counselor Munson?
Yes means we accept it.
Accepting the increase.
Yes.
The WIS.
You, no.
Yes is going with WIS, no, going against WIS.
Yes.
Yes means you accept the increase.
I'm so confused.
I am, too, that's why.
Just for the record, let me restate it. Yes means that you're accepting for the PAT, two PAT positions, 10107, 10108, you're accepting the increase that the department wishes to do.
Against the WIS recommendation.
No would mean that you.
Against the WIS recommendation. Okay, I can say yes.
Okay.
You're going against WIS.
I am going against WIS.
So, we go to yes.
So, you're going to say yes. Hogg. Counselor Hogg?
No.
Counselor McKim?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
No.
Sorry. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
No.
Motion fails, two yes, five no.
Okay.
And that concludes everything on 10F. Am I right? All right. Thank you.
And because we've done all of this moving around, I do not have signature pages, so I will be using your electronic signature pages for those, okay? Thank you.
Any Counsel wishes to look at that and see, look, remember all of this they can. All right, let's go to 10G.
Okay, Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to approve two new job descriptions and to simultaneously amend the 2024 Salary Ordinance by adding account line 10-178, Maternal and Child Health Coordinator, 35 hours, PAT A, non-exempt, and account line 10-179, Vital Records and Administrative Support, Assistant Director, 35 hours, PAT B, non-exempt, with an effective date of September 8, 2024.
Second.
All right, Ms. Kelly.
These are two new proposed positions, the Vital Records and Administrative Assistant Director. The purpose of that is to be a backup and a support for that main director role, as well as doing additional duties upon, above and beyond what were previously being performed. The Maternal and Child Health Coordinator is a new position that directly aligns with our core service requirements. This position would essentially be doing a lot of research on the leading causes of infant mortality in Monroe County, and developing programs and implementing evidence-based programs in the community to address those mortality rates.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson, this went through the PAC process as well?
Yes, and as Administrator Kelly mentioned, these are new positions. You can see the WIS recommendations for maternal and child on page 91 of today's packet, and Vital Records. Let me get that real quick here. I don't have that in front of me right now, but both WIS recommendations and job descriptions are in today's packet for you to see, as well as the classifications that WIS recommends, as you can see in the table of contents for today's meeting.
Page 91 is the WIS memo for Maternal and Child Health Coordinator.
Thank you. I always like to have that for our public record. All right. Discussions on this item from Counselors. Counselor Hogg.
Okay, so, this is as WIS recommended, correct? Thank you.
The Vital Records one is as well?
Yes.
Both are as WIS.
I just can't find, like, flipping back and forth.
Sorry, yeah, I think that was 80, 88, yeah, 89, sorry, 80, page 89, and then 91.
There it is.
Other comments or questions from Counselors? Or Wiltz?
Could you tell me who these folks report to, will report to?
Yes, so, for the Assistant Director, that position will report to the Director position in Vital Records. And the maternal position, if approved, would report to a new Clinical Services Director. Alternatively, this position would be reporting directly to me.
I have the org chart on the, on the screen.
Not that that's all illegible, but.
Yeah.
I can tell.
So, all the way to the left is that Clinical Services and Case Management Director, to be determined, hopefully, maybe, and. And, um, and the Maternal and Child Health Coordinator conceivably would be under that person is what, that's correct.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes, can you see and hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, my comment here is that this is a very important topic, particularly as this relates to infant mortality. Uh, and, uh, that's something that, in Indiana, uh, that's something that we still are very concerned about. And so I, I just wanna applaud, uh, Ms. Kelly for bringing this forward and speaking about it. Uh, this is a very important topic for, uh, a lot of folks, uh, here in Monroe County. So, uh, this is something that we can here do on the council for broader issues, and I think it's important to vocalize that.
Other comments or questions? I have a, a strong agreement with Counselor Iverson on, uh, maternal and child health particularly. And I would just add that as we look at that org chart and some of our discussion about backups and workflow, that we do everything to make that a successful position. The statistics in this state are enough to keep anyone up. And for those parents, we have got to partner with them in any way, small way that this county can. Uh, this is a, a thing beyond things, and, um, we gotta make that work right. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's go to public comments then. If you have any, come to this podium in the Naukau Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. I think that's it, right?
Lori, you need to give me a call so we can figure out about that one position so we can get it back to WIS. Thank you.
All right. Let's go to item nine on the agenda, Youth Services Bureau. Eleven, I apologize.
Counsel, I move to approve YSB's request for an additional appropriation and fund ninety-one oh three dash ninety-six twenty-four, Project Safe Place, in the amount of three thousand dollars in the Supplies category and six thousand eight hundred eighty dollars in the Services category for a total appropriation of nine thousand eight hundred eighty, nine thousand eight hundred eighty dollars.
Second.
Thank you. And thank you for waiting, uh, through our agenda. We appreciate you being here with us.
No, no problem. Um, so this is just our annual Safe Place grant. It's for a two-year term. Um, this is what we use to do programming and buy supplies for the four counties that we serve, which is Owen, Green, um, Brown, and then, of course, Monroe.
Questions, comments from counselors? Not seeing any.
Yeah.
While you're here, if people still, to this day, and tell me if I've said this wrong, if they see Safe Place on a building, that means what?
That means that they are a Safe Place site, that individuals are trained, um, to, for a Safe Place call. So you walk in, say, hey, I feel unsafe in a situation. It can be as simple if, like, a kid is lost, that they know to call someone. They have a Safe Place responder, myself, I, my name's Jessica Brown, in case you didn't know, 'cause Sarah's on there too, my supervisor. But they would call someone and someone would respond from YSB. We try to be there within fifteen to twenty minutes, but of course, for our three surrounding counties, takes a little longer for us to get there. Um, and they have the option to either come back to the youth shelter if they do feel unsafe in their situation, or they can talk to an on-call counselor. Um, we have that option as well, or we just help them provide or connect to services if they need that as well.
Okay. I know I hadn't heard that since my younger days and-
It's still accurate.
Some folks out there might need to hear that.
Yeah, we have like a hundred and six between the four, uh, sites, between the four counties that we serve, so.
Oh, that's awesome. That is a strong number. All right. Any questions, comments? All right. Let's go to public comment. If you have any, come forward to this podium in the Naukau Hill or raise your hand on Teams. All right. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
Thank you. You too. Let's go to item ten, Veterans Affairs Department.
Uh, counsel, I move to approve the Veteran Affairs Office request for an additional appropriations and fund one thousand dash zero zero one two, General Fund Veterans, in the amount of seventeen thousand, no, three hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty cents in the Personnel category.
Second.
All right. We've got our strong team from the Veterans Affairs Department with us. Take it away. What do you wanna tell us?
Well, first of all, thank you all very much for having us tonight. We really appreciate you, uh, letting us come back for two weeks in a row. Um, this request is for an additional seventeen thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty cents to pay for, uh, PERF, FICA, and the additional salary, uh, that is required to pay, um, uh, for the Deputy Director, Assistant Veteran Service Officer position that was increased in February.
Comments, questions from counselors?
Appreciate your patience.
Well, of course. We're happy to help.
Essentially already made this decision, so.
Decisions already made. Well, thank you while you're here. Just thank you for all that you do for our veterans and for your explanation of that in our last meeting. I hope that's always helpful to folks. I know I hear all the time how helpful you all are, uh, literally. I hear it all the time, and that's, nothing makes us prouder than that. Counselor Iverson.
Mr. President, I just wanted to echo those comments. I heard yet again from another family that was able to get, uh, veterans benefits thanks to this department. This is money well invested.
Awesome. And one thing I'll tell you, having worked with other counties, sometimes a call to that office does not get quite the results that our folks do. And I think that's awesome that we've got such service here, so I just appreciate it. All right. Counselor Hawk.
Yes, I just have, uh, uh, many, uh, members of my family who, uh, are, and have served, and served, well, during, uh, active duty and, uh, they came back with, uh, awards for getting blown up, I'm telling you. Uh, we need you. We do. We need you. It is really a matter of life and death for some of these veterans, that they know they have someone to call when they're feeling like they just need to reach out and know somebody cares to get them the help that they need, whether it be with more services or whatever it is that they need. And I know that you'll be there to do that for them. So thank you.
You're very welcome. It is a passion for both of us to do this work, so we're happy, um, every day to come in and be able to affect that kind of change.
Awesome. Any further comments? All right. Any public comments? If you have them, come forward in the Naukau Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you for waiting. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Let's go to item twelve, Assessor's Department.
Isn't it item thirteen?
I messed it up. I apologize.
Thirteen.
Thirteen A.
No problem. Uh, counsel, I move to approve the assessor's request for an additional appropriations and fund one thousand dash zero 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 eight, General Fund Assessor, in the amount of one hundred sixteen thousand, two dollars and sixteen cents, and the, and the Personnel category.
Second.
All right. Assessor.
Right. Um, I, the assessor is downstairs, and I think they anticipated a break before this item?
Oh. Yes. We're pulling through it.
We're, we're trying to, so, so drawn is what we're trying to do.
I can, um, help.
Listen.
Um, however, I think they did. I spoke with them earlier, and I think they wanted to represent themselves tonight.
Sure. I don't want to say, this is essentially the same as the Veterans Affairs where we've already- I don't wanna get in trouble with the assessor's office.
Right. Well, it takes them about two minutes to get up here, do a little break.
We take a little break?
Yeah.
How about a seven-minute stretch with the assessor? Okay, let's go to recess, seven minutes.
Let me go grab that assessor and get back.
Fall down the stairs. Be careful. We're gonna bring this meeting back to order. We have got the assessor with us, and so we'll move to item thirteen. Do we have a motion on this yet?
It was already read.
All right. So I'm gonna turn, Judy Sharp, our assessor, and her chief deputy are here, and, uh, let you take it from here.
Good evening, counsel. Uh, thank you so much. I think what I'm gonna do, uh, you know, you all know Lisa's surface, my chief deputy. She is phenomenal at doing this. And we have worked with Bree, I don't know, for quite a few weeks, if not months, on this, uh, on tonight. And Bree was so nice. She was gonna present this, and I know they're here every day for this week, and I thought, no, I can come up, but I'm gonna let Lisa explain. This is, this is all started a year ago, when we got our raises, or whenever we got the raises. That's what this is, April. Just April. Um, so anyway, I'm gonna let Lisa present this. If you have any questions of me or Bree, I know we're both here to answer. So, Lisa?
Good evening. Um, this is just the additional appropriations along with the FICA and the PERF to cover all of the raises that you approved for our office earlier this year. Um, I moved around as much money as I could and waited to come to you all, um, when we were down to the nitty-gritty of what, what was left in our fund for this year for these people.
Thank you very much. All right. Comments from counsel?
Yeah, this is actually a question for the auditor. Is this appropriation included already in line six in our draft four B? In, in the additional appropriations line in our four B? So we're, okay, so those numbers are already accounted for?
Yeah, um, she, 'cause we had talked about, uh, that, uh, thirty-three A, and she asked about it, and I said, yes, included, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Yes, Counselor Hawk.
Right. Uh, just as a reminder, i- if you remember, uh, this was when WIS came back and, oh, and we found out that they were using, uh, information from other counties that wa- didn't even include the right, uh, job descriptions a- at all. And that's when we, when we put together the information from some of the other counties, then we didn't go along with WIS. But it simply was because they, uh, told us what they were comparing it to, and it was not the same.
Yeah. And I, Counselor Hawk, I appreciate that very much, and I was reminded of that tonight. It was not a small effort. It was a strenuous effort, which is underselling what it was on the part of the, the department and the request, and the assessor herself, her team, and then continuous counsel follow-up over a quite a bit of period of time. It seems a little bit fonder now than it does then, did then.
It was, um, you know, I think I've said this over and over, this worst year I've ever lived through, and it would be over with in August, but September's not much better. So I guess I have another year where, you know, hopefully it'll be good. But I do appreciate everything, and I know my staff is so happy. And, um, and it was well-deserved. I think it was, it was just time to look at that, and I saw, uh, Lisa had everything on downstairs where I could, where she was watching. I saw the Health Department, we overruled a lot of WIS's stuff there. Um, and just FYI, um, you know, I sit on the Board of Directors, the Association of Indian Counties, so budgets are a big deal. And I'm hearing more and more counties having to go outside of WIS because it's just not working. And I'm surprised at some of the, the numbers that I'm seeing. Um, I thought I was paid well. Um, I really did. And I was telling Bree today, um, the assessors share everything. Bartholomew, Bartholomew County Assessor, who's half our size, ten thousand dollars more than I am, and her staff the same way. They overruled WIS also. So just FYI, keep that in mind. I mean, we only have so much money, of course, but I think we've got a company up there that hasn't moved up with the times, personal opinion. So, but thank you once again, everybody. And please, a shout out to Peter, who's over our shoulder, I guess muted. Uh, he helped so, he helped my staff along with Marty so much on getting this done, and I really appreciate it.
Well, I'm always over your shoulder.
It's so hard to, it's weird, isn't it, back there?
It is weird. We're still not used to it. All right. Any other comments or questions from counselors? This one's been well discussed, as they say. All right. Let's see if the public has a comment. If they do, they should come to the podium here in the Naukau Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none. We'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Hey, let's go to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the assessor's request for an additional appropriation and fund one thousand dash zero 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 eight, General Fund Assessor, in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars in the Services category.
Second.
I will address this. Um, thank you for listening to this. This is because when we were moving money around to try to make everything whole, we, we wiped this, this budget out. This is my contractual line, and Lisa and I talked a lot about this. We're gonna ask for only fifty thousand instead of a hundred. That'll help you guys a little bit, maybe. I might have to come back again next year. What I really need this and to have it where I can get it is, one of the biggest issues that we deal with, uh, in the assessor's community are appeals. And I've had a lot of appeals this year, like I always do, but the ones that, it's not the homeowners, it's the, uh, big-
Dark box stores.
Well, you know, dark box isn't the problem this year. It's the apartments. Um, you know, the legislator changed the way I had to do apartments, and we put on, um, a lot of money on these apartments, rightfully so. They were very under-assessed. But it's not our local people that live here. It's these big, uh, well, let's, let's just face it, it's the student apartments, these hundred million, two-hundred million dollar apartments. They bring in, uh, tax reps, law firms from outside. And I can defend what I've done, and, but if they wanna take it all the way to the state, which a lot of them do, so far I haven't had any, any go up yet. But I've got Smallwood over here. It went from thirty-some odd thous- thirty-some odd million to ninety-six million. Well, they're kind of upset, the tax rep is. So if I have to, he hasn't, we haven't had the hearing yet, but if he does, what I'll have to end up doing is having an appraisal done, and it has to be a fee appraisal. Unfortunately, these big appraisals can cost tens of thousands, if not a hundred thousand dollars. If I don't get one, we lose at the state. Flat-out lose it. Um, so I want this in the, in the pot. I will not use it if I don't have to, but we can't afford to lose that kind of money. You know, Cheryl makes to the dark box. Lowe's appeals every year. Um, fortunately, I had an appraisal two years ago, I think, from Lowe's. Well, they appealed again this year. So I, um, I've contacted, I contacted my appraiser. We're hoping that we can just, don't have to do a full-blown appraisal, just update it. That's what I wanna do. It only raised forty-four thousand, but it's an outside firm that comes in, and I'm not gonna let, I'm not going to let the homeowners pick up the cost of all of this commercial property. It's not right, 'cause it just shifts the burden. So we can, I think, we're pretty sure we can live, it's only three more months for this year, then I can live with the fifty, and hopefully I won't even have to use that. And it just will revert back to next year. But I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Crossley.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, thank you for being here. Uh, I was gonna say, one comment before I make my question. I was listening to something that you did, um, on a local podcast, uh, in relation to, like, what the assessor does. And so I found that very interesting, and I actually listened to it a couple of different times. So-
Thank you.
I learned something new by listening to that. So thank you. Um, you mentioned appeals, and, and my former life, I used to work for, um, apartment management. So I know all about, I know all about that. I'm very familiar- I know all about that, I'm very familiar with that, but since you mentioned it, I'm just, out of curiosity, are you seeing an increase year after year for the appeals?
I don't like even one appeal, and I get laughed at throughout the state of Indiana. If I so much as lose an appeal, you'd think the world comes to an end, okay? I don't handle this. So just to give you an example, I, we have to track all of this for the state, and I'll be glad when the appeals season is over, I can show you. Last year, let's just use last year. One of the things that we adopted here in Monroe County before the rest of the state did was what's called an informal appeal. So when you get your Form eleven, residential or commercial, you will have an informal meeting with me and my staff before it ever goes to the board. And we had six hundred of those last year, which is normal, okay? That sounds, it is a lot, and it's a lot of work. Out of those six hundred, only seventy went to the board. That didn't mean they won at our end. It means that we sat and we talked about things, and most of the residential people really have no idea what their wealth is in their homes, and, uh, some still appeal, and that's their right. Out of those seventy, I think three or four went to the state, and they were residential besides Lowe's, and that kind of stuff. This year, we're on the track for the very same. It's just the apartments are a little bit more than we've had, uh, because we have four hundred, and I didn't even realize this, four hundred and ninety-nine apartments. That's probably one of the largest grouping of apartments in the state of Indiana. So frankly, a lot of them did not appeal. Some of the big, uh, student, the new student ones didn't appeal. I'm not sure why. I kept waiting for it to happen, but, um, well, that's what we're dealing with now. Most of these, we probably have a hundred out there that will still be, uh, that we're working on daily, so we'll see what happens.
Counselor McKim.
Thank, thank you very much. I'm, I'm just trying to understand here, is it that the appropriation in your twenty-twenty-four reassessment budget was insufficient for this? Or is it just that you had the appropriation, but there wasn't enough cash in it because we haven't received the, uh, settlement yet?
Yeah, that was part of it. Lisa, do you wanna?
In the first six months of the year, it was that we had to wait for the spring settlement to come in. We had outstanding invoices that I couldn't pay from, I think it was end of March until settlement came in, which has never happened to us before, which obviously we don't wanna not pay the people that we owe money to. As soon as the money came in, we did get the people paid, but talking with Kim and with Bree, this was a suggestion that came up to put a contractual line into the general fund budget so that we didn't have that same thing happen next year. And it's most likely that we won't have to use any of the money that you may appropriate tonight, but like Judy says, it's a safety net in case we do need it for appraisals or other things that might pop, come up because of the appeal process.
Thanks, and Ms. Gregory, do you have any thoughts on that as well?
Yeah, so, um, things cleared up a bit after settlement. We're sitting on, in this fund right now, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. There's, um, let's see, we have, um, two hundred and seventy-three, two eighty-three remaining, um, that's appropriated. So there, there could be a shortfall there. Um, so this, like they explained, is just a safety net, and I don't think they're gonna have to use it based on history, but this way, we're covered in case.
And you agree that this is the appropriate way to, to make sure they have the money?
This is the direction I provided, because as we all know, um, if, you know, we shift levy, all the extra, I guess extra, if you will, goes into the general fund, which has, you know, the most, we have the most freedom to work with there.
Right. Now, I do think that we, you know, just, and just looking at our four Bs, it does, it does appear that our, our reassessment levy is probably got, we let it get a little too lean, and so we'll probably wanna, uh, increase that a little bit, but okay, thank you. That answers my question. I certainly support this. But, but you are saying that we could reduce this to fifty thousand?
Sure.
Counsel, I move we, uh, amend the motion to reduce the request to fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion with a chorus of acceptance.
We've already voted, cause everybody seconded.
Everybody seconded.
I think I was the only person that didn't move my mouth, and, uh, so we have a motion and a second. We'll save it for Counsel Munson for legality. Any discussion on this motion?
Comment after.
Okay, seeing none, uh, we will do a roll call on accepting that.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor McKim. Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you. So now we've got, we're back down to the fifty thousand dollar, and I've got Counselor Hawke.
Right, I just wanted to mention that, uh, their carryover beginning balance was not high enough for this year. And so w- we've got to just look at what we think their carryover is gonna be, because that's what they've gotta live on until June, until the end of June, and so that's where it, where they got that sticky wick up there. They just couldn't get caught up enough. So we've got, we just have to adjust that four B and put more of the levy there. But even if we put more of the levy there, it's not gonna fix the first six months, because they still have to wait. When we put that levy in place, they don't get the income tax. They have to wait until June to get that added to whatever their carryover balance is, and I'm seeing a hand go up, so do, do you disagree with me?
Not at all, Counselor Hawke. We've already, um, you'll see it, um, tomorrow, but we've already addressed this for the, um, beginning of twenty-twenty-five budget until the twenty-first twenty-twenty-five settlement is received, which will be June in twenty-twenty-five. So there's, um, a line added, I think, um, uh, Ms. Sharp mentioned, but, um, we're using, we anticipate using general fund contractual line to carry them through, just as a safety net again. They hope not to have to use it, but that's the plan.
So essentially the same thing we're voting on tonight, we're also going to consider for the twenty-twenty-five budget.
Well, the reason why I mentioned that was because I thought if there was something they could do with contractual, have it all signed and everything, they could encumber it for the following year, we bet whatever, let's just go. It's past seven thirty.
We no longer encumber.
Any other discussion on this? Uh, let's, I think, go to the public on this. Uh, if you have comments, come to the podium in the Nat U Hill, or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's go to item B. Oh, pardon me, just, pardon me.
The other item B.
That's it.
Was it? Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I think you're finished.
I'm looking actually at the auditors B, sorry about that. Thank you, have a good night. Let's go to auditors A, fourteen, fifteen A, I think it is.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for an additional appropriation and Fund eighty-one oh six dash zero 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 zero, rural transit, and the amount of nine hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars in the services category.
Second.
All right, and we'll go to Bree Gregory for this.
Yes, thank you. Um, this is another one of those housekeeping items resulting from our changes to our appropriation procedure. So just for full transparency, we're asking, um, you to appropriate for our pass-through grant distribution to rural transit.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from counselors? Right, seeing none, we'll go to public comments. If you have any, come forward in the Nat U Hill, or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, that takes us to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution twenty-two forty-eighteen, establishing target fund balances.
Second.
This is a repeat to us, and so Ms. Turner King, do you wanna offer some comments, or, or the auditor offer comments on this?
Okay, counsel, you've seen this a few times now. We're bringing it back to you for approval tonight, but this target fund balance resolution was a recommendation, um, from FSG Financial Solutions Group. They suggested that all funds should hold a minimum balance, a minimum cash balance, and, um, that the resolution should be reviewed yearly and updated as needed. So this is just requesting your formal approval of what we've kind of already presented, um, and discussed.
All right, Counselor McKim.
And I will just say that, uh, the Long Term Finance Committee did, uh, recommend a passing of this, uh, resolution as well as the numbers that have been presented. Also, uh, the issue that we just dealt with in reassessment, uh, this sort of addresses structurally the issue that we just had to deal with, with kind of a workaround.
Other comments? Counselor Hawke.
Um, yes, um, I, I think that, um, the things that are setting within that frozen levy, uh, those funds should be, uh, tied together so that we know that, that is really, uh, one set of numbers that we have to look at differently from special purpose and from the motor vehicle highway. Now, I know that the state says we're not allowed to have more than one rainy day fund, so they don't really like to see us have a lot of cash sitting around. But the way we address that with the special purpose fund is adjusting the rate so that, because we know that the, the rate for special purpose just brings in a lot more dollars than what was ever originally thought that it would need for what we're doing with it. Uh, and so we are adjusting that down. I think it's good to, to look at that fund balance, but I don't think it ever should be moved over to any other fund. We should just re- remove and reduce that rate, because the taxpayers were told, if you will pay the special income tax rate special, it will only be for X, Y, and Z. It was very specific how it could be used, so just, I just wanna make sure that we're clear. We can't take it out, uh, in some other me- me- method, uh, and try to put it over into rainy day. It, it would just be, uh, I would have to go to the State Board of Council and say, we're cheating.
Counselor McKim.
I just wanna make it clear, no one is suggesting, no one is suggesting what Counselor Hock just, uh, remonstrated against.
I would just say it was discussed somewhat at the Long Term Finance Meeting, and this is the same thing I said at that time. I haven't changed my thought.
We, that it was not discussed at all. Maybe it was a recommendation made by FSG, but it was not something that's ever passed, as far as I know, my lips, or, or Counselor Deckard.
No, we disagreed. We disagreed.
Was it something I said in inquiry or something that, uh, we've not done?
Just saying it was at that meeting, boom, 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 and I said at that time, I hope everybody has studied the legislation.
Yeah. Counselor Iverson's got a comment.
I have a, a question for members of the Long Term Finance Committee. I, I have to admit, I haven't watched every single one of your meetings, and my question is, uh, why, uh, is there not target balances for all of the frozen levy funds? For example, election or Cune Bridge.
It was not, I mean, we were not presented with, uh, recommendations from our financial consultant on that one. And election is kind of a tricky one. I mean, I, I, I kind of agree that, uh, we should consider having one for election. I mean, it shouldn't hold up the, um, passing of this resolution, but, um, we, we might wanna consider one for election where, you know, when we originally established the election fund, we kind of established it with the idea of funding a four-year average of, of the four election year cycles now. So a lot of things have changed in the, uh, in the world of elections, and costs have increased quite a bit, and I think that initial analysis is probably not very useful, but it would be useful to, to redo it, uh, and to, at some point, add a, uh, recommended, uh, balance for the election fund, so, yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes, uh, and, uh, the other fund that he mentioned was the Cune Bridge Fund. Now, remember that even though the state legislation recently said you could take that rate up to point one, uh, we, uh, but right now we have it at point oh two one three, but if we increase, remember the point oh two one three is a rate times your total, uh, assessed value. So that, over years, just keeps bringing in more money, which is needed to operate the, the Cune Bridge Fund. At some point in time down the road, we may want to take a look and maybe increase that rate somewhat, because we cannot afford to let our bridges, uh, fail. However, we need to recognize that every time that assessed value goes up, that point oh two one three brings in more money, and it is a part of that frozen levy. So while we need to maybe take it, uh, you know, keep an eye on it, it really doesn't have a target fund dollar amount that we should attach to it, in my opinion, until we would decide we maybe needed more.
I think Counselor Iverson has, has raised a good point, and one thing I'll offer is, here's what I like about the Long Term Finance Committee, is that periodically that committee, which won't always be the, the three members we have now, will look at these questions that we used to just have in council comments at the end of meetings, kinda like this agenda item. We would just have, like, there was just random things, and sometimes I'd call it civics club, because I think some of us got some information, some of us shared some, but not everybody was getting action done. The cool thing about the committee is that that can be a reoccurring thing that's evaluated. Certainly, the auditors had a lot of thoughts on that as well. Uh, Michelle.
And, uh, and that's why FSG recommended that we annually review this and make changes so early in the year. So, um, that way, if you, you know, do see something that you need to change, we annually can change it.
Yeah, and these are the solid, kind of, financial, financially prudent items that need to be handled in that kind of a committee structure, so they're not into meeting, we've just been dealing with nineteen agenda items that are kinda day-to-day things, and that's why that committee's doing well. Counselor Hawke.
Right, and as a reminder for the public at home, um, we're not allowed to take from one fund and move to another fund, uh, at the frozen levy. Once you've established that rate and, and so forth, then that's what it is for that year. You can't move it. So the reason why we have to have a target to make sure we're staying on target, because if somebody runs short, it's, it's too late to change it during that year.
Yeah. Other comments or questions on this agenda item? Well, I'm going to move us along then to, uh, public comment. If you have any, come forward in the Nat U Hill, or raise your hand on teams. Go to a roll call vote.
The next item.
Next item.
Next item. Roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's move on to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution twenty-two forty-four dash thirty-one, establishing a transfer of cash from the general fund into the rainy day fund in the amount of two million, two hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred twelve dollars.
Second.
Go to, uh, Ms. Turner King and the auditor. Any comments you wish to add on this?
Okay, counsel, this is, um, also a recommendation of FSG and myself. We are, the county is, um, has, there's, um, a statute allowing a transfer to rainy day, um, which is kind of the county savings account. The target fund balance for the rainy day fund is ten million dollars. I am recommending a transfer of two million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars so we can get to that target balance.
am recommending a transfer of $2,227,512 so we can get to that target balance. And this resolution would do that for us.
All right, we'll go to comments from counsel. Anyone?
I support it.
I heard it. I support Counsel Wiltz.
Is this what Counselor Hawke was referring to before?
Was she asked at the end, are we doing this?
I'm just, I'm trying to, yeah, I mean, I, I support it. I have no problem with this, but I'm just curious, is this what?
She was referring to the special, the lit special purpose, and wanted to make sure that we didn't do any, remember, we're, we're handling that by adjusting the rate, or at least possibly adjusting the rate.
Yeah, okay. All right. So it says, it is not, is what you're saying. Got it.
Right. This is just from general to rainy day.
Yep.
All right. Further discussion. Again, I think this is sort of a result of long-term finance and kind of following through on why FSG's asked for. And we have said for years, I will say, we need to hear from FSG and follow what they say. Well, this is what that looks like. Any other comments? Seeing none, let's go to public comment. If you have a comment, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, that takes us to item 15, which is council comments. Counselors, anything to add? Counselor Munson?
I would like to speak to the developing expansion of the convention center. Recently, one city council member stated at a city council meeting that she was, quote, "saying out loud, I don't support the convention center." I thought this was a serious disservice to all the people who have been involved with the many years of success of the convention center and the ongoing work of the Capitol Improvement Board members and its staff, the convention center staff, convention and visitors commission, Visit Bloomington, and the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission. So I want to say out loud, I support the convention center expansion, as I have since the, the 20 teens, when expansion discussions began in earnest. Best wishes to all in the upcoming deliberations about designs for the expansion and the hotel. And I hope the public will continue to be involved and speak to those in charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Munson. Other counselors?
Actually, I, I-
I don't get to say out loud very often.
Yeah, I don't even want to follow that, because that was great. I, I agree with absolutely every single word that Counselor Munson just said. No, actually, I just had a question, quick question for the auditor. But, but in advance of budget, returning to budget session tomorrow, we had talked about possibly a revised 4B that had the levies allocated differently. Have, have you done anything on that yet? Or, or is that, should we see that, will we see that tomorrow?
You'll see that tomorrow. I'll work with Michelle, and we'll get it together for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, very anticlimactic.
I appreciate Counselor Munson's comments. I offered a few of my own earlier that were a little bit more indirect, but I think you found the right approach. Sometimes there's a place for indirect, and I think tonight was direct. Counselor Crossley?
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. I know we have, we're in, what, week two of budget, which feels like forever. And especially next week seems to be the grand finale, with us kicking off the public hearing next Monday for the correctional tax. So I am very much interested in a call to action for those who have sent numerous emails to come and speak to us. And if you haven't sent us an email, also feel like you can come and speak to us as well. This is something that is very important. And I also just want to kind of debunk, do a Mythbuster moment, because I keep hearing folks say out loud that council is kind of stalling and doing, you know, just kind of kicking the can down the road. Well, council fiscal, as, as the fiscal body, we have to make sure that we are being very responsible with taxpayers' dollars. So that means to be looking, or we have to look at everything that is getting given to us and presented to us in a timely manner. That's what we're doing. I don't think that we're kicking anything down the road. I think us moving forward with the correctional tax public hearing is a step forward in trying to make sure that we are really doing and really moving forward, because we know time is of the essence. We already know, we've heard the sheriff's office and jail commanders and those that say that, that the building is failing, folks. It is what it is, and we have to move forward. And that's the job that some of y'all elected us to do. So I just wanted to debunk that myth, because I keep hearing it. And it actually, I keep hearing it from people that I respect, and I respectfully disagree on that notion. The other part to that is, you know, sometimes I keep hearing people say, well, we weren't in certain offices at that particular time when, you know, that might be. But we're here now, and maybe that isn't the case. Again, I've said it several times, December 21 is when I stepped on this council. And I have been, although new to this, very true to this. And I'm, I'm really interested in moving forward and seeing what we can do, because we do need to make sure that we are moving. But I want to be the mama bear of our council staff, or just council in general, and just say, we are doing our job. And I hope that others can do their job and join with us as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crossley. Other comments? Counselor Hawke?
Yes. Over the years, I can tell you that I have liked what some departments do, maybe in general, more than what maybe other departments do. Maybe there's just things I'm more interested in. But believe me, I cannot recall a time that anyone ever sat here representing the public and say something as what I felt out of, out of proportion response having to do with the convention center. And, and, and let me just say that, you know, I didn't support using the food and beverage tax for the convention center, because I'd made a commitment that because I was told it would always be, it would never be local tax dollars. And so I supported it with the innkeeper's tax money. Now, but however, once that thing is passed, then we all join together to make it a success. And, and that is why we are here to work together. Certainly, we have a right to vote for yes or no, or change something around. But once that vote is done, then that is what you support. And so that's what we do as a group, because we represent the people of this county.
Other council comments? I'll just offer a very lighthearted comment. I feel like it's almost, maybe I shouldn't, but we cannot let the time go without saying that this weekend is the Monroe County Fall Festival over Counselor Hawke's district neighborhood. And we want to congratulate all that community, Richland Township, Altsville, and of course, all Monroe County for enjoying it. Of course, Steinsville follows, I think, weekend after. So it's always a sequence, so you never forget it. But congratulations to our friends with a little lighthearted finish. Anything else? Counselor Munson?
I just want to remind folks that this Sunday is Lake Monroe Day, 5 to 7. You all are invited. There's a celebration at the Fields, tickets at, at Buskirk Chumley for, for a wonderful band, a busman's holiday, hearty hors d'oeuvres and beverages, and a good time will be had by all. And there's very little speechifying promise. It's dancing. It's going to be dancing.
All right. Anything else? Would they go to the order or the county? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.